I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do the honors of roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Clerk Cody here. Treasurer Rice?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Houck?
Here.
And Trustee Theron is excused.
Thank you very much. Happy to entertain any motions regarding approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Go ahead.
Motion by Cody. I heard Houck first, if that's okay?
Yes.
Support by Houck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to item five on our agenda, presentations. And apparently, we have Mr. Nanny joining us this evening for presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Presentation. I'm here tonight to talk about our sidewalk-related activities. The community academic development department takes a lead on working on sidewalk projects, trying to extend our network of public sidewalks and improve pedestrian and bicycle accessibility throughout the community. In doing that, we're really working to implement two of your global ends. One is 1.3.1, which is safe accessible routes for pedestrian bicyclists and motorized vehicles. And the other one is 1.3.4.1, which is a new, newer one, create bike lanes and crosswalks on roads. So that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, the details of how we work to implement that. As part of that effort, we kind of broke it down into seven areas. It's called focus areas. And I'd like to walk through those. The first one I'd like to talk about is our efforts in working with the planning commission to implement our township ordinances related to sidewalk construction that is associated with new development projects. We do require, our sidewalk and pathway ordinance requires sidewalk construction as part of any new development. In 2018, a policy was adopted to allow for temporary relief to be approved by the plan commission based on certain criteria. That policy was amended just not too long ago to clarify some things, but that is essentially still the same policy. We have designated streets that are priorities. And there are other areas where the plan commission has the ability to grant relief when requested. That relief is temporary. They're required to install the sidewalks at a later date. They're required to show the sidewalks in the site plan, design them in, even if they're not going to construct them. So as part of that effort, in 2021, we saw just over 1,700 linear feet of new public sidewalk get installed as part of new development projects. Among those was the Bluegrass Road frontage of Menards. There's over 800 linear feet there. That was an administrative site plan process that we let them know they need to install the sidewalks. And they did take care of that. Consumers Energy put sidewalks in as part of their city gate reconstruction on their Summerton Road frontage. And the road commission installed over 900 linear feet of sidewalk on East Bremis Road as part of their project, all in 2021. In 2022, we have about 1,100 linear feet of sidewalk that I'm going to call definite. We have a project, this is one you're familiar with, it's Dunkin' Donuts and Marathon Gas Station on the corner of East Broomfield and South Isabella. That project, building permits are out, mistig requests are in, construction is about to begin. So I think we call that one definite, that sidewalk, which is a pretty big stretch, is going to be installed very shortly. In addition to that definite, we have about 3,000 linear feet of additional public sidewalks that, let's put them in the possible category. These are development projects that, one is a development project that has farmacy plant approval, but has been delayed by an easement issue, in this case, a private easement issue. And that's the Sam's Club filling station project. That one is a nice one because it's going to connect all the way from the south end of Sam's Club site, all the way up to Bluegrass Road and connect also a little stretch of sidewalk into Walmart that was missing. So it's going to be a nice addition. It's going to be a sidewalk. It's heavily used. We see people walking in that area anyway. That, as I said, they have a short easement that they're still arguing about with another property owner. Just heard from them today, again, that they're still working on it. They still intend to move forward with that. But it's not definite at this point. In addition to that, Mr. Chuck McGurk and his Westwood Business Park project has an obligation to install some sidewalk on South Lincoln and East Bremis Road, that corner there. About, again, about 1,100, you know, 1,100 feet total that he's supposed to install before the end of this construction season as part of a previous agreement. So those are projects that are all coming, extensive sidewalks, as I said, through private development, through our ordinance enforcement. One thing I'll note related to these development projects that we have emphasized with each developer that comes before us, that not only are we looking for public sidewalks to be installed, but we want to have the connector sidewalks to be installed. Some other past projects, we had a public sidewalk out front, but you'd have to walk through the parking lot to get to the building. We are emphasizing that at the time of design, that they need to be designing in a safe pedestrian access. An example of that that's constructed is the new Dollar General store on East Pickard Road. You can go see that. There's a connector sidewalk that runs through one side of the property. And some bicycle parking that's also now required that they've installed for their project. So that second focus area we work on is construction new public sidewalks, township-funded public sidewalks. Here, we're working with the projects identified in the adopted budget, annual budget. And here, we also work with an engineering consulting firm to provide design assistance, permitting assistance, assistance with easement acquisition and ultimate construction management. For a long time, the township has worked with Row Professional Services. We've had spotty success. We've had very little success in recent years. I will, I can report that we were on our third project manager. I requested in early 2021 the replacement of the project manager I, when I came here, I was working with. And he was replaced by his supervisor, who moved some things forward. But by the beginning of 2022, January of this year, I had to go back again and they brought onboard one of the vice presidents to be the project manager, to move things along, to get these installed projects underway. The other thing we did in January of this year was, working with them, I said, we need to focus in. We have a number of projects. We've talked about East Bluegrass Road, Broomfield Road, these pieces where we have easement challenges that I said, we need to focus on projects that are close to being ready to go. Let's get those done and we'll come back to something else. So as part of that, we focused in on two specific projects that were close to permitting. One of them is actually that set of plans right there, brought with me. That is East Bremis Road between Bradley Street and Lincoln Road, including doing the Lincoln Road intersection, sidewalk ramps. That is both sides of the road, basically completing the sidewalks on both sides of Bremis Road. That would be six-foot sidewalks on both sides. And that project is out for bid. The bids are due on May 5th, so we'll be seeing that one come back to us very shortly and moving forward. We have one easement that had to be wrapped up, took a little longer, but that one was done. And as I said, it's now out for bids. The second project that is very close to being out for bids is the project here on Lincoln Road, coming north from Lux Funeral Home here to the Township Hall. This one, with the very timely recent assistance of the Lux Funeral Home owners, who decided to grant us a short section of easement that we didn't have. They came to us and offered in February and provided that easement. That project is now moving forward. We were able to resolve some other issues along the pathway. Right now, that project, the vice president Row, who's our project manager now, is working with the road commission on remaining details and also with our public services department, on remaining details to bring that sidewalk here. So I expect, based on where things are, that that will be ready for bid in May, ready to go out for bid in May. So that's where we stand with Row. The other element to this part is that decision was made that we needed a new engineering service provider for these other projects. We need a new approach. And so I've asked Jennifer Hodges from Gordy Frazier, who of course does our work for Water and Sewer, and she agreed that they could take on the projects to bring these other projects to a conclusion. So we're going to be working with her on that. The folks at Row have indicated they will fully cooperate. The companies have compatible systems, so we're going to be getting all of the data, all of the digital plans, all the background information from Row that will be transferred over to Gordy Frazier and move those projects forward. We have construction plans, for example, for Bluegrass and Broomfield, and so we'll be able to use those and move forward with them with Gordy Frazier working with us to get these easement issues resolved. The, it is still possible, as we've talked about, I think, before, with regards to some of these easement challenges, is that we may end up either having to purchase easements, we've been trying to get them given to us, or in some cases, we may end up having to initiate an eminent domain process to secure those easements. That's, we're not there yet. I've talked with our township attorney about that, but it is possible that we may end up having to do that with some of those sites simply because of non-cooperative property owners. So once we have Gordy Frazier onboard and moving forward with that, we'll be zeroing in on those specific problem areas. So Gordy Frazier, in addition to Broomfield and Bluegrass, we have several other projects in our 2022 budget. They'll be starting work on those. Those have not been planned. They were, several projects that were not turned over to Row because of the challenges we're having. Those include some sidewalk sections on Bud Street to connect up to Jameson Park from Pickard Road, a section on South Isabella, both in the East DDA district, and some sections of sidewalk on West Pickard Road out here to the Township Hall and over to McDonald Park. Those would all be essentially given to Gordy Frazier to begin design work. That's our second service area, our focus area. Our next one is that we are working, we are working with the public services department and township manager to ensure that the road commission is focused on providing paved shoulders on their road projects. We continue, we've met with them. You're aware of those projects, those efforts. We'll continue to push for those paved shoulders as much as possible. I've also been working with MDOT on their M20 reconstruction project. As part of that effort, in collaboration with city staff, we were able to get MDOT to initiate an additional kind of study, a safety study of the M20 corridor, looking at what could be improved in terms of pedestrian and bicycle safety in particular, but also safety of motorists along that road. That process has, they've gone through a study process, brought in experts, brought in consultants. They literally walked the entire corridor as well as drove it. And that then is resulting a report that is in process right now that's identifying a number of safety improvements along there. One of the ones that is floating around is the idea of replacing the sidewalk on the north side of the road with a wider paved pathway, a bicycle pathway. The reason this particular project comes up, just at this point, an idea, is because the north side of the road is going to be heavily impacted by this construction. They are going to be taking out much of the sidewalk on the north side, all of that grassy median, the curb and all of that, to put in a temporary traffic lane. So cutting it about 12 to 15 feet into the north side median to do that for the construction. The benefit to that is that when they're done, they're going to be putting all that back and they could put back a paved pathway in place of the four or five-foot wide sidewalk that we have. So those, all those ideas are coming back to the MDOT project team and we'll be continuing to work with them to try to implement as many of those ideas as can be done from a pedestrian safety perspective. We also are working with, a focus area, working with the city, as you are aware, on the pathway project going north to Mission Creek Park and ultimately up to River Road. Part of our effort here, in addition to the financial support the board has agreed to provide, we are working to try to help the city acquire a couple of easements that they need. They just have a couple of properties where they would need an easement to run the sidewalk through to, or pathway through to River Road. So we're assisting them with that and also collaborating with CMU on a pathway connector project to connect the student housing area on Deerfield Road more directly into the campus pathway system. That one is also in process. Two other areas we work in, in this sidewalk effort, one of them is our East DDA district. This is an area where we plow the sidewalks every winter. We maintain winter accessibility all through there. So part of our role is to oversee the contractor that handles that. This past winter, we didn't have much need, actually, because of how things worked out, but in some cases, it has been an extensive effort to make sure those sidewalks stay clear. And I see regularly people using them, even in the coldest days. And then the last area that we work is we support the planning commission and our sidewalk and pathway prioritization committee as they are looking longer term, kind of trying to look over the horizon at what else do we need? What other priorities, what other recommendations for new projects do we need? In fact, we just, the sidewalk committee was here just last night having that conversation. And so those are the areas that we're working. We're looking forward to seeing projects underway as soon as possible this year. And as I said, all that we're doing is to implement those two global ends that you have and try to extend our pedestrian and bicycle connectivity through this community. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, Gordy Frazier, how available are they to start on these projects?
Jennifer Hodges indicated that they would be able to start immediately on those projects. Now, again, this is an effort. Part of it, a big part of it is the easement asset acquisition. And so they're going to have, and still be taking time. We won't see fruit from those immediately, but they indicated that they would have, they would be able to take those projects on.
That's cool.
Trustee Houck?
Well, my question kind of relates to Gordy Frazier, too. Are there, was there an effort to get any other local firms?
In this case...
I'd like to see as much things kept local as we could. And I know we have other engineering firms in the area.
There are a number of engineering firms. There are a number of regional firms that have local offices. Row is one of those. In this case, the priority was to work with the engineering firm that's already doing work with us in the township on Water and Sewer. They know where these things are. And so we have a, it's cost-effective to work with the same engineering firm. We found, quite frankly, with Row that that has been a challenge.
So it's going to be cheaper to go with them than it is Row?
I think it's going to be more efficient overall.
Okay. I just don't want to see us spending, you know, more money than if we were using a local firm, so.
Was Row having just a problem with staff or...?
I don't want to really question why. I had challenges with two project managers. I've worked with many engineers. I've worked with a number of engineers from Row over the years in various projects in various communities, and I always found them to be a good firm. I will simply say that we had to make a change. We worked with them until we couldn't. And ultimately, as I said, the recognition on the Row side that they had a problem can be found in the fact that they now have a vice president running the project manager work for us. So that's, I think that's a key indicator that they recognize they had an issue here.
Sometimes it makes you wonder if we should hire our own engineer. Well, really, if we're paying all this money. I mean, this sounds like a lot of money to me. It does.
They get a lot of money.
What's that?
Engineers get a lot of money.
But I mean, if we hired our own, I'm just wondering, you know, I don't know. It just seems like a lot of money. Is there any estimate on how much this is going to cost?
Well, we have, as I said, we have a project out for bid right now, so we'll...
I mean, the engineering part.
Well, that will be coming, once we have, once we have the materials transferred to Gordy Frazier, they're going to work on that and bring us back with some estimates in store.
I know, and I know we work with them a lot, but I'm just saying, you know, we have local people that pay local taxes, so support our local communities, so I'd like to see as many things kept local as we can.
As would we. And I will point out that we do have, I'll call it a master agreement with Gordy Frazier. We've had it for a number of years. And that allows for project-based activities to be done by Gordy Frazier. Annually, they provide us their updated pricing sheets, their hourly rates for different levels of engineer and administrative staff and that kind of thing. And they do abide by that. We also, you know, depending on the projects, we do use local firms, Goodrow, for instance. But as it relates to Row, I'm not going to speak to what their internal issues are. That's not my place. I will tell you, though, that I've worked with individuals from Row when I got here. Rodney, Mr. Nanny, came in and worked with, I think, one of those individuals. And we just had to keep after him to a point where I said, I'm done. And then since we have the existing service agreement with Gordy Frazier, we're very comfortable that we'll get good work, we'll get, our account will be treated as it should be, and the work will be done in an effective and efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Oh, go, Connie was first. She had her hand up.
Trustee Bills?
Sorry. I thought it was the same time.
Trustee Bills?
Did Mr. McGurk indicate that he was planning to do this stuff this year? It's already almost May.
He's under obligation, based on an agreement related to his development projects, that he would complete those sidewalks in this construction season.
And planning is already, we've already approved the site plan, right?
Right.
For that, so it doesn't even require anything more except just to put it in?
Well, he'll need to get his permits from the county road commission and from MDOT for the section on...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So those will have to be done, but the rest of it is simply the prep work and construction.
Got it.
Trustee Brown?
Mine's more of a comment, not a question. Very detailed report, thank you. Very helpful for me. I don't know about the rest of you, but to see what you've been doing. I just, I want to thank you. I didn't realize there was that many, that much footage of sidewalk going in, and that went in in 2000. and that went in in 2021. So that was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was going to be my first comment was really appreciated the information. It was, Trustee Brown put it very well, so I'll just say what he said. I did have a couple of questions on the, and this is probably just because I was in the Planning Commission when some of this was happening. And I don't know if I'm supposed to mention the store, so I'll just say the northwest corner of Bradley and Remus. There was parking lot, there's not room in there for a sidewalk? That's been managed to be resolved at this point?
Right, that, as part of the design, they're going to be, that's probably one of the more difficult areas to work in. The sidewalk is going to wander a little bit there, but yes, they've worked out a solution to be able to put the sidewalk in that space.
That's amazing. Because I remember that site plan and the Planning Commission gave the waiver or just the pass on it. I can't even remember what it was, but we thought it was undue harm. So he's not losing parking spots at this point necessarily. That's amazing.
Good to hear. Thank you to the Lux Funeral Home. I know I had a lot of conversations with them about that and I really appreciate them stepping up and granting us easement. And then just to comment on eminent domain, so we tried eminent domain or discussed it at least on Bluegrass area back around 2012 maybe, or '11? Were you on the board, do you remember that?
I wasn't until '14, so.
Okay, yeah, so I'm thinking it was around '12 or maybe '13. And the advice from our attorney at that point was just stay away.
It's a last, absolutely last resort.
That you could get into this and then 10 years later, you'll win probably, but it's a long haul.
Yes.
And obviously, you never want to upset property owners to that level. I had interest on that pathway in the north side of M20. That's really interesting.
It is. This came up actually in one of our meetings that came out is the consultants that MDOT hired to look at the safety issues and it was one of the items that they identified as important. From their perspective, the sidewalks are for walkers. And of course, although bicycles use them, their perspective is it really needs to be dedicated environment that's appropriate for bicycles as well. And that north side, because of all that work's being done, it could be a good environment for that. That's more to come on that.
Interesting, yeah.
How far do they go?
The construction project will start at this point. The original project included the US-127 interchange. The interchange has been removed, they're going to be doing a couple of roundabouts in there. They pulled the roundabouts out because of some other issues and they're going to revisit that in a couple of years. So at this point, the reconstruction is going to begin immediately west of the interchange, basically in front of the RV dealership in the Qualidian. And it's going to go all the way to Mission Road. And they'll be doing it in two phases. The first phase, basically from the interchange to just west of Isabella Road is in 2023 and then they'll come back and do the rest of it in 2024.
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. Really, y'all good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks Rodney.
So that brings us to public hearings. We actually have a public hearing this evening. This is something we've been dealing with for a good year now, at least it seems. Carriage Hill Estates, Number One and Number Two Subdivision Paving Special Assessment District. Do you have any comments that you'd like to add to this? So with that, we'll open public hearing for Carriage Hill Estates, Number One and Number Two Subdivision Special Assessment District at 7:28 PM. And seeing no public to offer, we will be dealing with this later on our agenda. So we'll close the public hearing at 7:29 PM, which brings us to public comment. Again, seeing no one, but I'll be happy to entertain 30 seconds. If someone walks in late, you never know. Public comments open at 7:29 and seeing no one, we'll close public comment at 7:29. No closed session this evening. That brings us to item nine, reports and board comments. So we do have the April monthly activity report, which we got in our mail late today. I didn't have a chance to read that, but I'll look at that later. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to read it and has questions.
I couldn't read all of it.
Just time to skim through, I didn't have time for questions.
And with that, that brings us to Mr. Nanny again, the Planning Commission, EDA sidewalks and ZDA updates. Mr. Nanny, you just got settled over there.
That's right. Right. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and chat some more with you. So we have just some updates. First, I think I'll start with our Sidewalk Committee. I'm not going to steal Bryce's thunder, but just a note again that the Sidewalk Committee met yesterday here to talk about sidewalk priorities and I will let Kim provide the details on that. The Planning Commission met on April the 19th. They had two development projects on their agenda. One is referred to as the Prestige Center. It's an assisted living facility on East Broadway Road, just east of 127. This is the existing assisted living facility that dates back to the 1980s. It's on a very large piece of property. If you drive by, it really looks like a vacant lot with a house on it, essentially what it looks like. The owners proposed to expand that facility. The original project also included some independent senior housing. That was found to cause conflicts with our available sewer capacity. So they scaled that project back to strictly the expansion of the assisted living facility. They are pursuing that project as what's called a Plenary Development. That's a development option in our zoning ordinance that allows for some flexibility for the developer and also for the township. There's some, essentially, it's a process where a good project that doesn't fit neatly into the boxes of the zoning districts can be considered by the township. It can be put forward and considered. It is a rezoning process, so it's something that will be coming to you as part of that process. But it combines a rezoning action to the PUD district with a concept plan that will become part of the zoning of the property if it's approved. So the Planning Commission was reviewing that revised application and concept plan. They did take action to recommend it for approval and they found that it met all the requirements that applied to the Plenary Development. That, because it's a rezoning, that application is currently before the County Planning Commission. They'll be taking a look at it at their regular May meeting and then after they, whatever action they take, they have the ability to comment on any township rezoning request. After that, they take their action, whatever that may be, then it will come to you for consideration on a first reading. That's another coming attraction for you. The second item that was on the Planning Commission agenda was the Crystal Oil filling station. If you're familiar with Crystal Oil, if you've been up north, you've seen them. But this is, they're expanding their station southward and they proposed to redevelop the southwest corner of Pickard Road and Isabella Road for that station. A couple of commercial buildings and three small houses are going to be removed. And this new filling station will have both regular gas pumps, but also have large vehicle diesel pumps and a fairly significant convenience store. They're very proud of their, they call them, referred to them as a small grocery store. We'll see, but it's a substantial size. So that project was before the Planning Commission for final site plan approval and it did receive that approval. There were a couple of details that need to fix and in fact, they've submitted the corrected elements of that to our zoning administrator and he's, currently has those under review. So we're expecting that project to move forward swiftly as well. They're looking, they've said that they intend to build that this year. In addition to that, we had a discussion with them about the Lincoln Reception Centers. You know, they've been meeting down the street at the Lincoln Reception Center just to have some more room to spread out. It actually proved very helpful for the public hearing on this PUD case where we actually had an audience and they were able to spread out as well. Currently, that reservation runs through the end of June. So we had a discussion with the Planning Commission about that and their comfort level about returning here, continuing there. No decision was made, but they've committed to making a decision at their May meeting as to what their preference is in that regard. In addition to that, also on the 19th, the EDA Board met down at the Lincoln Reception Center, had actually the same discussion. In the case of the EDA Board, they did decide that they would like to come back to the boardroom here. So beginning July, the EDA Board will be meeting here in the boardroom. And if the Planning Commission does decide to continue down there for their comfort, then that adjusts the timing on that and the cost would drop as well. But anyway, the EDA Board did decide to come back to the boardroom. EDA Board did take action to approve a participation agreement with the Board of Trustees for funding to support the installation of paved shoulders on the project down in South Lincoln Road and Brewfield Road. So you'll be seeing that coming before you at an upcoming meeting. That was the main item of business on their project, on their list. And that actually brings me to the end because the Zoning Board of Appeals did not meet in April and in fact, they do not have a meeting in May either. They have no agenda items, no business, so their next meeting will be in June. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm just going to follow up on the EDA. The support of the shoulders in coordination with Township Board was unanimous. Although the vote wasn't specifically on whether or not paved shoulders are a good thing or bad thing, but both through this meeting and a prior one, I think I can state for the EDA that they were pleased that this board fought and felt that it was the right thing to do in that case. So it was nice to hear that other perspective than we have, right? Is that your interpretation as well?
I would agree with that, yes.
That Crystal Oil is a big asset, it's a big change in that corner.
It is, it's going to be a significant change. They're doing a lot of work on that side, some nice improvements. And of course, it's taken care of some older buildings that unfortunately not have been as well maintained as they should have been.
Yeah.
I'm happy to see something going in there.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest eyesore spot right now on that corner. That particular piece of property.
I had some questions from the food truck operators down there. They're essentially going to lose their spot. I mean, I suppose they could ask the Crystal Oil folks if they could be in their space, but it's an interesting dilemma that they'll have to find a new place for the food truck.
Well, that's not really regulated, right? We need to have a food truck area, don't you think?
We do have, it's part of the amendments that you approved in the zoning ordinance last year. Of course, we have that food truck court, so it's now an option. And we've had, we've had a little bit of interest, some talk, right now sort of kicking the tires talk. It certainly could be a nice addition to the community.
Come out here in front of the township hall. I'd stop in here if they did. Free out here.
I don't know, bud. Not in my backyard, no.
Any other questions? Thank, oh, go ahead.
Not for Mr. Nanny, but I had just one question for Mr. Stooldryer about his report, sorry.
The activity report?
Yes, sir.
Are we all good with Mr. Nanny?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. I was just wondering if there was anything on the CMU master plan update that was relevant that might be interesting, the meeting that they...
Well, the thing that's gotten the most press has been the student housing apartment complex. That's got the most press. But I'd have to give that some thought to give that a legitimate answer. I don't want to speak too quickly on that.
Okay, not a big deal, I just was curious. I saw it there and I just skimmed over your report, it was pretty detailed. Nice report.
I apologize for how late that was.
I read quite a bit of the site plan too.
Yeah, I almost fell asleep reading it. It was very detailed.
And I'll be honest, I didn't have a chance to look at it yet, so. All right.
Keeps us awake during the morning.
Moving on, board member reports. Let's start with Trustee Brown.
I have no report today.
Trustee Bills?
I attended an Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting on April 19th. Not a lot, but there were a couple of things. Mr. Travis Keaton resigned from the Parks and Recreation Commission and they appointed Joseph Salmick to serve on the Agency on Aging Board of Directors through 2025 and then Kerry Curtis to serve as an interim trial court administrator, county trial court administrator. But other than that, a heck of a lot going on. But wait a second. That's about it.
We're missing Trustee Theryn tonight. Treasurer Wright?
Well, as Mr. Nanny said, we had our meeting last night. I actually got to hear a lot of the information last night, so that's why I wasn't sitting here jotting notes down. So I got to hear about some of the projects and that that are going through, so that was exciting. The, there were a few things that were brought up at the meeting and that and I'll just touch base a little bit on some of the things. There was, we had an individual who asked about like when we have projects and that going on. Is there a way that if there's like a stall in one project, can we take and have like a backup project that then takes the place while you're trying to get through the issues with that? I spoke up as an individual and I made sure to stress this is me talking, not the board talking. But the problem with doing something like that is the fact that in the blink of an eye, you know, just with the right conversation, someone can go from saying, "Hey, I'm not going to give you an easement" to, "Sure, let's go for it" and then your project is up and going again and then the funds are already allocated somewhere else. And so then you have to, you know, try to figure out what to do there. And so I kind of explained that to them so that, that kind of cleared the air there. I didn't notice any more issues after that. They did bring up in the meeting as well, at Jamison Park, it was brought up questions about, hey, you know, updating the field and things like that, because we were talking about some of the stuff going on. And one of the individuals had mentioned some nails and stuff out and that kind of thing. So Mr. Nanny said he'll take care of that. But we were just talking about updates and stuff like that, so I let him know about the Phase 3 and stuff that's still got to go on and that kind of thing. But I know that didn't have to do with sidewalks, but it was something that, you know, they were talking about the widening, was it the widening or, and that on Bud Street that was going to happen or that there was no right of way on Bud Street and they were trying to, you know, there's some things in the works for that. I don't remember the exact details, I apologize. But in regards to, you know, looking forward and projects and that kind of thing, 2023, you know, I discussed with them, you know, the annual business meeting that we, or the annual meeting that we had with all of the boards and that one of the roads that was brought up at that annual meeting was Isabella Road. And so we discussed it and that is actually going to be one of our recommendations for 2023 is looking at Isabella Road, especially with... for 2023, is looking at Isabella Road, especially with the constructions and stuff already going on with sidewalks in there. Try to get everything going for Isabella Road, especially there in between Broadway and Remus, with the school and stuff there and the new jail going in and everything else in that area. So, looking at trying to get at least as much of Isabella as we can. Long term, because we also looked at long term, you know, we were just throwing some ideas out. We're definitely, you know, interested in other people's input and that kind of thing, but some other long-term projects we thought about was the pedestrian bridge there on Broadway, trying to get something there. Isabella, you know, finishing up the rest of that. We know that that's something that's got, you got to get the city involved and maybe the tribe, and, you know, there's a lot of people that have to be involved in the rest of that, so we know that that's going to take a little longer for some of those spots. And then Crawford was also thrown on there as well. We realized there's already a lot of footpath and stuff around there, but it was something else that was thrown in there as well. That was basically it, other than, you know, what Mr. Nanny already talked about earlier, so.
Totally. Good meeting.
It was a very good meeting. It was fun, so.
Clerk Cody? Trustee How?
I went to a couple of meetings. On July 14th, I went to County Road Commission meeting. They approved Brian contracts for all of the townships that were interested. I think there were a couple that weren't interested, but they approved Brian contracts for everybody, including ours. Signed a letter of appreciation, a certificate of appreciation for an employee, Pat Kenny, that had worked 26 years and four months, that retired here at the end of the month of April. They've got partial payment from MDOT for two projects. One is ours down here on Lincoln Road, Lincoln and Brewfield, and then another partial payment for Mission Road from Roundabout to Roundabout, Roundabout here on Mission. That affects a mile and a half of your township. But anyways, that's it for them. No more talk about anything else on there. It was a short meeting. Last Wednesday night, I went to the Council of Governments meeting, and they had a nice presentation on Isabella County Parks. That's all I had. Thank you.
Very good. And we've already covered the EDA, and that's all I had, so we'll move on. That brings us to item 10 on the agenda, Consent Agenda. Clerk Cody, I'd be happy to entertain any motions regarding Consent Agenda.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda with a clerical amendment to the April 13th, 2022 regular meeting minutes under item B to read March 23rd instead of April 13th.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Rice, to approve the consent agenda with clerical correction on the minutes. Further discussion? How were the warrants?
Got it. I looked everything over, everything left to it.
Hearing no other questions. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the clerical fix to the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda approves unanimously. That brings us to new business. Oh, yeah, new business, and we have quite a list tonight. Item A, having to do with pump station one, construction contract. I'm excited to see this. Mr. Stooldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. We're asking the Board of Trustees, I'm sorry, good evening, everybody. We're asking the Board of Trustees to consider approval of a construction contract with the Isabella Corporation in the amount of $958,000 for the replacement of pump station number one, which is located on Enterprise Drive. Paperwork for this begins on page 21 of your agenda packet. This project does go back quite a ways. In 2018, the sewer capital improvement plan included this project to rehabilitate and upgrade this particular pump station. This is located within the EDA, the East Downtown Development Authority District. It was originally constructed in 1998, and during the evaluation, due to the age and the extent of the necessary repairs and improvement, it was determined that a complete replacement would be the way to go. This also allowed for some increase in capacity as well. In 2018, there was, the board approved an action to design this new station at its, essentially at its current location on the property. We went out for bids at that time, and the bids came in considerably higher than we had budgeted for, than we were, and that we were anticipating. And in conversation with the various contractors that were bidding, we were advised that a lot of the increase was due to the, basically the small area that they would have to work within to do all this work and to create the correct environment from a safety perspective and meet the various safety regulations. That was driving a lot of the price at that time. So, we kind of put it aside, thought we'd, you know, get some additional bids, try to think of other options that we could consider for this pump station. While we were in the process of doing that, the property that, where the pump station is located and where we have the existing easements, was put on the market for sale, and Ms. Smith, the Public Services Department Director, was thinking that it may be a way to deal with this issue was to purchase the property. And so, then a group of us, myself, Ms. Smith, Mr. Nanny, went out and kind of walked the property, took a look, and I made the decision that it made sense to attempt to buy the property. And you may recall that the EDA eventually did purchase the property, so we thought we could do a couple of things here. One is improve the property, get rid of the older building that was on it. It fronts Pickard Street, so from an economic development perspective and from EDA's perspective, felt like it made sense. And then, from the sewer management perspective, having control of the property gave us a lot more flexibility in terms of where that pump station may be located, the easements that we would need to properly perform that work. So, the EDA did eventually buy the property. The, in 2021, a little later in 21, we had Gordy Frazier redesign the pump station since we now had a different environment to work within. The project was put out for bid in early 2022. We have obtained Eagle permits, so then we put this job out for bid. The bids came in, again, higher than we anticipated. This time, though, not from a construction, safety perspective, but with all the things that are kind of related to what's come out of COVID, supply chain issues, labor increases, material price increases. So, just to give you an idea, in 2021, when we were considering purchasing the property, the bids we received at that time for this job were a little over $700,000. Less than a year later, they're a little over $900,000, which is what is in front of you this evening. The project includes abandoning the existing pump station, moving it further south on what actually is two parts of the property. And so, we'd be installing new pumps, all new infrastructure associated with the pumps, the wiring, control panels, all that kind of stuff. And then also, because we're moving it south, we'll need to install about 160 feet of pipe that connects where it currently ends at the existing pump station to bring the product back to the pump station at the south end of the property. We feel these improvements will allow ongoing maintenance to occur at a much, at more reasonable pricing levels, because we'll have plenty of room to work within the easements that will be provided for by the EDA. They're the current property owners. We feel that further delaying this project puts some of the components of the existing pump station at risk of failure, and because of the service area that it services, that would not be a good thing. And then also, the increasing capacity, I believe it's about 200 REUs, which will facilitate growth in that area. So, for all those reasons, we're recommending approval. There will be a need for a budget amendment, if approved, in the amount of approximately $134,000 that will be brought to you in July. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Smith's also here tonight, if we have questions that I can't answer.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction contract with the Isabella Corporation in the amount of $958,000 for the replacement of pump station one located on Enterprise Drive.
Support.
Motion by Howk, by Cody. I had a question for you before we get into debate. With the station being relocated to the south, do we have anticipated downtime for that pump station? Because we'll have to disconnect the existing one, correct?
They'll do whatever they do, so there will not be any interruption in service.
Right. So, what will happen is they'll construct the new station. They'll have that ready to go, and then they'll bypass pump for a period of time, and it's all in the spit, in order to disconnect from the existing station and put the flows over to the new station. And that will all, that process will not take that long, because that new station will be ready to go. So, that's the other benefit that we have in the relocation is there'll be less bypass pumping.
Interesting. So, what do we do with the old hole? Is that going to, does that get filled in? Because ultimately, we're going to probably, I'm assuming, lose that easement, right? The idea was to give that to whoever buys that piece of property?
Right. So, it will be abandoned to a certain level, and then the, for instance, the well will be totally filled in with sand and taken care of. The old can will be, you know, cut to a certain level and then filled in with sand. So, essentially, when it's done, it'll be a piece of property that can be used, you know, where the old station was at.
Right.
There's a manhole that's going to remain, and there will be some existing sewer lines, sewer infiltrate in that area, but essentially, the rest of the station will be, although some of the components, such as part of the can, this is a can station, so you have a large can down there that you can climb down into, that will be there, will be filled in, and it'll be, so that, you know, parking lot and things can flow.
Yes, that'll make that piece of property a lot more attractive.
Food trucks.
Yes, that's our...
Trustee Howk needs food. We got...
So, when we do a project like this, I guess Kevin Merkin would want to answer. Of course, we're going to go in, and I mean, we do all this construction, we rip up sidewalks. Do we, we put sidewalks all back in when we do a construction project on our properties, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is where that station is, but...
No, there's not where the station's at, but we do. If we were to go in and do, you know, damage any of that.
Let's say there were sidewalks.
Right, right.
We'll put that at. Yeah. We have to go out and put a service in, a water service, and we have to take sidewalks out for it, or part of a road. We're going to do that next week, Isabella Road. We'll put the road back.
Well, I guess more my question is, is even if there wasn't sidewalk, if it's a new project, would we put, well, I guess if there's any sidewalks in that area, would we put sidewalk in if we're calling for other businesses to do it when they, when they put in their projects?
We have to get something on the project and...
Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you. Trustee How?
So, I don't know what the sewer fund, is it fairly solvent to absorb that money? Doesn't matter? Because they have lots of extra money?
The review of the finances in the sewer fund support the ability to pay for this.
Any questions, comments? Clerk Cody?
No.
Oh.
We should do it as a roll call, just because it's a almost a million dollar contract.
Big ticket item?
Yeah.
I know Jeff brought up sidewalks. Now, if he did, we wouldn't put sidewalks down Enterprise Drive, would we? Because there's none there, and that's mainly considered an industrial area.
The sidewalk policy statement has an exception, well, the exception, one of the reasons for granting temporary relief is that the property is in the industrial district. So, yes, that's true. First of all, we wouldn't be subject to sidewalk, sidewalks, if it's part of a utility installation, but there is some consideration that we need to make related to industrial districts. This is something that the Plan Commission will be looking at as they're kind of looking broadly at the master plan the next time that comes up, because the ability for employees to get to employers, including pedestrian, bicycle pathways, I think is an important consideration. So, industrials are actually a good area to consider for sidewalks, but that's a planning process that I think we'll be looking at more broadly as part of a master plan update from a policy perspective than we should from our community if it's desirable.
Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We have a motion to approve the funds for pump station one. Any questions on that motion? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call, please?
Trustee Howk?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Treasurer Milky?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
And motion to approve the upgrade to pump station one passes unanimously. Maybe we should call it replacement of pump station one.
Now, it's a replacement, yes.
Right. All right, that moves us to item 10B on our agenda. MDOT Good Faith Offer Easement documents sign off. Mr. Stooldryer, would you like to introduce anything on this?
Just real briefly, there is some paperwork on page 28 of your agenda packet. This is related to the Pickard Road work that MDOT's doing. They needed some property for the road project. We have some existing easements on that particular piece of property, and then the property owner, generally, the procedure is that MDOT presents... And then the property owner, generally, the procedure is that M.DOT presents to the property owners and the other folks that have interest in the property, an amount of money, they call it a good faith offer. And then they ask the various interested parties to sign off, approve, approve that. We did review it. We, Public Services Department, met with the folks from M.DOT, along with our attorney. Because we have infrastructure there, we need to make sure we are protecting that. The review of the M.DOT plans and all, we're comfortable that our interests are protected and that they remain protected. So we're asking you to approve this good faith offer and allow us to execute the documents.
I can make a motion on that. Make a motion to approve the sign off of the two M.DOT Good Faith Offer Easement located on northwest corner of Pickard Road and Carter Street, and the northwest corner of Pickard Road and Betty Lane, in association with the M-20 reconstruction project from Mission Street to US 127, and direct the township clerk to execute the good faith offer documents.
Support.
That'd be unbelievable.
Three-way tie.
Motion by Brown, support by Rice. Comments, questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I had asked one question on this, outside of this boardroom, that I'll ask again, just so you can hear it, but I'd asked about the M.DOT storm drain that they want to put in there. Was that going to disrupt our water mains that are in there? And the response, correct me if I got it wrong, was the storm drain is actually going to be underneath our facilities, but that they would be not interrupted, essentially.
So on the northwest corner of Pickard Road and Carter Street, we have a force main, a water main, and the M.DOT, the proposed storm drain will be above it, both existing. And then we have maintenance gravity sewer there as well, and the M.DOT storm drain is going to be underneath it. So that's, that's what I was detailing in the section. And then on Pickard and Betty Lane, everything, the force main, the gravity, and the water main will all be below the storm drain. So there will not be a conflict in that area. We have other conflicts on M-20, but not there.
Not these two, okay. So does that make it harder for us if we have a leak or need maintenance there?
Yeah, if we had to get in and work on those at any time, then we would have to work around that storm drain. They have storm drain out there now, they're just putting a new storm drain. So, you know, half dozen one, the other. But yes, I mean, that's a very congested corridor, very congested. Anytime you have to get in there and work, you're working around a lot of utilities. But we would be able to do that still within the easement.
Awesome, thanks. Any other further questions? Okay, thank you. You knew what I was going to ask, didn't you? Can we have a motion to approve this good faith agreement with M.DOT? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11C, again, related to M.DOT. This with a performance resolution for municipalities. Mr. Stuhl dryer, do it again.
Thanks. Just real briefly, on page 45, you'll find your paperwork. Each year, the townships required to apply to M.DOT for a yearly right-of-way permit. We, you may recall that the board acted on this earlier. M.DOT then changed their wording a little bit in their resolution, so we had to bring it back before you. It's in our minds and not, not a material change. So it's just kind of having to redo it. We did use this opportunity to add additional name to the list of folks that can interface with M.DOT on some of these issues, adding Mr. Nanny's name to the list. So we're just asking you to approve it.
I move to adopt the M.DOT Performance Resolution for Municipalities for working within M.DOT roads right-of-ways.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Rice. Questions for manager or comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the motion to adopt the M.DOT Performance Resolution update?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hauck?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
And the resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Item 11D, Back to Carriage Hill Estates, 1 and 2 subdivision paving, Special Assessment District, Resolution Number 5. We keep moving this along. Mr. Stuhl dryer, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
This, this will be, if approved, the last action by the Board of Trustees to formally approve the Special Assessment District. The work is to grind and apply a two-and-a-half inch overlay to the, to the road, some gravel shouldering. You did approve Resolutions 1, 2, and 3 in the fall, summer, and fall of 2021. You approved Resolution Number 4 at your last meeting, which created the public hearing that you held earlier tonight. The main purpose of Resolution Number 5 is, one, it confirms the special assessment role as shown in, in your packet, all those property owners. The total amount is $102,539. The resolution also will set the number of annual installments at 10, under the current wording in your packet. It sets the interest rate to be charged on future installments at 6.5%, which is, according to your policy, 3% over the current prime rate, which was checked just last Wednesday. And it sets the first due date at September 1, 2022. If you approve this, the notice of assessments will go out to the property owners within 20 days of tonight. The next technical step will be a participation agreement will be brought in front of you with the Isabella County Road Commission, who's actually doing the work. We anticipate that that would be at your May 11 meeting, and that the construction would commence and be completed in 2022.
I'll move to adopt the Carriage Hill Estates, Number 1 and Number 2 subdivision paving, Special Assessment District, Resolution Number 5, to confirm the special assessment role, determine the number of annual installments, and determine the interest rate to be charged on future installments.
Support.
Motion by Bill, supported by Brown, for the discussion. Seeing none, Clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call on the Carriage Hill Estates Resolution Number 5?
Trustee Hauck?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
That brings us to item 11E on our agenda. This is cleanup on Jonathan Lane on a property the township had purchased. With that, happy to give the floor to our manager for any.
Thank you. We're asking you to approve a bid we received from Greenscape General Contracting in an, in an amount not to exceed $16,750 to demolish and remove the building foundation, any existing fencing. There'll be a permanent removal and capping of utilities, removal of all associated debris. The site will be restored to essentially what would look like a yard. And to authorize the township manager to sign the agreement. You may recall, this property was purchased by the township from the county treasurer. They had had the property due to the tax foreclosure process. The public purpose for the, for the purchase was to facilitate the establishment of a pedestrian connection between the two adjoining neighborhoods. There's also a 30-foot-wide sewer easement that goes through that property that we, that we thought we could protect as well. One of the reasons we bought the property, and the structure itself had been dilapidated, and we were running into some ongoing and continuing code enforcement issues. So we recommended that the board approve the purchase of this. You did. The building itself was removed, sold and removed some time ago. And so the work for this was put out to bid. We received two bids, one that was entirely responsive, the other not quite. So we're recommending that you approve the bid from Greenscape, which was fully responsive to the request for bids. Funding for this was included in the FY 2022 budget, and the work would be completed in 2022. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
When the house was pulled off there, was it all intact? It's pretty bad shape.
Well, it was purchased, I don't know, did.
Were they able to move that, or did they have to demolish it?
They were able to remove it.
Wow.
I'll move to approve the bid from Greenscape General Contracting, not to exceed $16,750 to demolish and remove the building foundation and existing wood fencing on Lot 61 in the country's choir escape, state subdivision, number 2, which is 5243 Jonathan Lane, PID 14-059-00-061-00, along with permanent removal and capping of utilities, removal and disposal of debris, refuse and materials from the parcel, and associated site restoration, and to authorize the township manager to sign an authorization for services agreement with a successful bidder.
Motion by Bill, I think I heard Hauck first. You okay with that, Brown? Support by Hauck. Any debate, questions?
It should be nice to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, for sure. That'd be nice.
And I, I noticed there were no, I know I want local people, and I noticed that neither one of these guys were local that gave a bid, but I know it was put out, and everybody in the area was too busy. So that's why nobody bid it, the ones that I called two or three contractors, and they were all too busy. I'm surprised that the one contractor didn't supply a certificate of insurance.
Yeah.
They're, they're popular in the area, they work in this area all the time.
Where, where's Greenscape from?
It says Lake, Michigan.
Lake, okay. I see their trucks around, I thought they were local, I, I just see their trucks around a lot.
Green scene is.
Yeah, green scene, I've seen that too, but I've seen these guys too.
Yeah, I've seen these guys too.
They've been around, they do some work in the area.
I think it's fairly local. I think it's great.
Lake is pretty local.
Yeah.
Good.
So the original purpose of this, and I, I don't know if this, outside of the motion too much, was really to connect those two neighborhoods? I mean, one was to clean up the blight that was there, but has any more thought been done by staff as far as looking at a pathway or anything? Or is that, after we get this?
This, this will be one of the items that will be provided to the board to take a look at.
Oh, okay. Did you mention that?
I did it in my report, because this was under the.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, thanks. Any other questions? Motion to approve the bid from Greenscape for Jonathan Lane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mashen, sorry, I'm struggling tonight. Motion passes unanimously. I wasn't sure I'd make it through the meeting, so I'm doing really good. Let's see. That brings us to item 11F, Policy Governance 2.5 Financial Condition and Activities. This is more on your side, if you'd like to introduce it.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for the board to do their annual review of policy 2.5, which is titled Financial Condition and Activities. The full report begins on page 64 of your agenda packet. The top-line wording of the policy states that with respect to actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a mere material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established via your ends policies. There are several sub-policies that I'm not going to go through and read here tonight, but I interpret this policy to indicate several things. One, there won't be expenditures made or incurred that will exceed the expenditures budgeted for the current year unless it's an emergency purchase, and there's a way for that to be handled via policy 2.5.6. And that the manager will not make a single purchase or commitment unless it falls under that emergency purchase provision of greater than $10,000. The policy also talks about tax payments that we collect as agent for the other taxing units. And so part of this interpretation of the full policy is that all tax payments to the other governmental units will be made according to state statute. We'll make payroll on time, we'll make our payroll payments and reporting to the various state and federal authorities timely. So that's how I interpret this couple-page-long policy. The justification for that is that it's, when, when the budget is approved by the board, the, that allows the administration to go about the business as long as we're operating within the policies of handling the day-to-day activities. And that in turn allows the board to operate at your policy level, as opposed to trying to get down into the minutia. So the policy wording, the way I've interpreted it, and the justification is all kind of fit and rolled up within the entirety of the governance policy document. The data, there's quite a bit of data that's provided in the report. The administration would argue that the expenditures are in support of the ends policies either directly or at least indirectly. We have not made any draws on general fund reserves this year, or in several years now. All the tax collections that were done during the tax collection periods were in fact dispersed to the half a dozen, or I'm sorry, closer to a dozen, taxing units, timely by their statutory dates. W-2s were issued timely, 1099s were issued timely. All the payroll reporting to the Social Security Administration or State Department of Treasury are done, were done timely. We did not purchase any real property during the quarter without prior board trustee approval. The cash flow for the township is very strong, so we have no problem paying our bills timely. And for all those reasons, my position is, is that we're in compliance with the policy. Be happy to have any feedback or comment from the board. Be happy to have any feedback or comment from the board.
I would agree. So, on page 81 of your packet is the questions. Anybody answered no to one through six?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Thought it was pretty cut and dry, so I thought I could ask it that way. Any area about this policy that's not clearly addressed or that you worry about is not clearly How about any language changes?
No.
And I wanted to ask that one because I saw one thing I'd like to look at changing. So, on page 64 of the packet, item 2.5.6, which was already addressed by the manager, was talking about the $10,000 limits. It says $10,000 for the township hall. Not sure why it's identified as township hall there. I didn't know if I was misinterpreting some of this.
I think that's probably just inartful wording. We do generally separate water and sewer from everything else, and I think this distinction is to be trying to capture everything else, so.
Yeah, and I wondered if it'd be clear, because it's really, that's how it was intended to, the policy was basically. We have other facilities and buildings, the parks, et cetera, et cetera, that it'd be nice to be able to be clear that this policy is allowing.
Right.
I understood it as everything other than the water and sewer is how I take it.
Yeah, but it says township hall specifically, and I really kind of thought I should say township facilities.
I was gonna say, I kind of took it as anything related to like township hall business, meaning everything but water and sewer. But that's, that was just me.
There is one other, and I don't have it right in front of me, but there's another policy that needs some, call it minor wordsmithing, that needs to be brought back to you, goes back a little ways. I'll make this kind of change to add clarity. And basically, it'll be township, it'll distinguish between all township operations versus water and sewer operations.
That works.
Y'all good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this?
No.
Thank you. Moving on, 11G Asset Protection Policy Governance 2.6. Again, this is on your side, Mr. Stooldryer.
Thank you, and this policy is on page 82 of your packet. At its highest level, the policy states that township management shall not allow corporate assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, or unnecessarily risked. Again, there are a number of more specific subpolicies under that that I won't go into right now. My interpretation of this policy in its entirety is that the Board of Trustees wants to ensure that, one, the township has adequate casualty and theft liability insurance. In terms of data, I've supplied the insurance certificate in the packet, so you can see that that policy does in fact exist, that we should, the administration should be timely maintaining and as appropriate replacing equipment so that poorly maintained equipment often has negative safety consequences in addition to getting in the way of just normal operations that were not exposed to claims of liability or operate without proper risk management. We have submitted emergency operation plans to the state as required for water and sewer operations. We work with the emergency management operations at the county and have plans in place for the emergencies with them, that when the township does make purchases, the proper procurement practices are followed. You'll see routinely in your request for board action that we put, work out onto the street as appropriate and receive the bids, consider the various bids, and we often, but not always, well, what we always do is recommend the responsive bidder that is both responsive and cost-effective. Price does not drive these recommendations entirely. And that we don't want to damage the organization's public image. I think that's discussed in this policy. So, that's how I interpret this policy. If you read the details, the interpretation kind of follows the policy, so I don't think there's much in the way of interpretation that is outside the specific policy wording. There is some data presented in your report. I think the first one I want to call out is that particularly during 2021, the township, the community, the board, the entire organization, all the employees, I thought did an excellent job of trying to provide services at levels that were pretty much what our residents have come to expect even with COVID and folks being out on quarantine on occasion and, you know, meeting remotely, all that. That was a big deal. It was, I think it showed adherence to protecting our assets, continuing to maintain them, not damaging our public image. So, I wanted to call that out. I did mention the insurance that we have on property, equipment. The certificate of insurance is in your packet. We spend a fair amount of money and time and energy training our staff. The training reduces risk of injury. Coming with the training is often ideas and information that allow us to incorporate best practices into our operations, which has a positive impact on what we're trying to do here, whether it's staff from the Public Services Department receiving, you know, training on how to properly get down into a hole or not go down into, you know, below grade, whether it's community development, economic and development staff attending training to be up to speed on best practices, what's going on in the industry. We do have an asset management plan that we follow rigorously, which is why you see all these, all this maintenance activity, the filming of sewer lines and the lining of sewer lines, so that that does in fact occur. The FY 2020 financial statements, when audited, there was the highest opinion, I forget technically what they call it, but we received the highest auditing opinion that's available. So, that indicates that our financial statements are in proper order and that they're fairly presented and folks that use them can in fact rely on the information that's contained therein. So, based on that, again, I'd argue that we are in compliance with this policy. We can be happy to receive any comment or feedback from the board.
Well, in my eyes, you don't have to do much arguing on that one. Asset protection here at Union Township is unbelievable, and I think you guys do an excellent job at it, all the way down the cleanliness of the trucks. I don't think there's a Union Township truck you walk by ever that is dirty. I look for them. I really do. I appreciate that because I'm a clean freak and that's, as a project manager myself, that's exactly what I would expect on my projects. Great job. I think this one, out of any of them, we are very much in compliance. I would have to agree. I don't think you have to argue on that one.
I would like to comment, that's directly attributable to the various, to the three department heads here. They have standards that are second to none in terms of how they want things done, what should be done, you know, what shouldn't be done. And of course, I support those fully, and they even go above and beyond because I probably would put up with a dirty truck once in a while, but you just do not see them.
Or a dirty shop, or a dirty floor, any facility I go into. It's outstanding. Great job, Kim and everyone.
And all that flows down to, you know, every employee is very conscientious in the township across the organization.
It shows pride and it also encourages safety.
Union Township shirts on, very professional looking.
Thank you.
The only thing I would have added to your data, and you kind of talked about it, but I'm guessing that this is a result of how well staff dealt with difficulties that 1919 brought, but I'm thinking roughly four years ago, you began to focus on cross-training. And to me, that is dealing with risk management. So, I felt you may have incorporated somewhere here that I didn't see, but certainly I think that's an important thing that you've implemented that helps protect the assets we have here.
That's very true, and I did not speak to that specifically. There has always been and continues to be a lot of cross-training amongst all the folks over in the water and sewer area. It's amazing how Ms. Smith can move people around and continue to get the day-to-day work done. The cross-training has been occurring across the organization. Tara Green has been picking up on accounts payable work with the resignation of Ms. Hannah Fitzpatrick as a result of cross-training, so.
The foresight of the cross-training itself to you guys to do that years ago, to start that a few years ago before even COVID, and now with a labor shortage, that cross-training is paying off tenfold for Union Township because you just can't find people.
I'm guessing, Kim's probably been doing that for a long time. What I saw our manager implement that was with the higher staff, higher level staff that, I didn't see that before, right? I'm guessing you probably, that's who you've been for a long time. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, what can we pay more?
That's not in our hands.
All right. Anybody?
I know there's nothing we can do about it, but man.
Page 86 in your packet, the six questions, are there anybody answered no to any of those?
No.
Anything in the policy that's not covered that you feel should be covered?
No.
We're good to go?
Yes.
I have one question.
Sure.
What is TRI coverage in insurance? Never heard of that.
What?
Tarif. Oh, that's what it is.
Hopefully, we never have to use it.
Yeah.
Probably resulted in 9/11, right? A lot of changes to.
Yeah, I guess I never noticed, like, in my business policy, I probably have that too. I know I do because I don't, I know I got a letter from my insurance company a couple years ago on that, where you had to add that. I just never knew what those initials were for. I guess I've never looked at it. Thank you.
Yeah. Item 11H Policy Governance 3.4. This is more on the board's side, so I'm assuming each of you have had a chance to kind of read through this. Is that accurate? So, on page 91 is our questions. You feel like we're in compliance, not in compliance?
We're in compliance.
People weren't compliant.
Anybody feel the opposite of that? We skip number two. Do you think we can improve this process to be in better compliance?
So, you do most of the, you and Mr. Stooldryer do the agenda planning, isn't that right? I mean, we don't, we don't plan the agenda.
Well, we kind of do. I mean, we plan it as an annual kind of thing, right? We look at, we have a cycle we go through in the annual process.
I don't recall doing that.
Well, we have a budgetary process that kicks off soon, and then prior to that, and this is one of the things I'm going to lift up, so let me lift that up now because it pertains, that, it says, "Cycle will start in June with the board's development of its I'm just rereading through this. So, 3.4.2.1 talks about consultation with selected groups in the ownership or other methods of gaining ownership input are done through that agenda process. I can say we do better at that. If I look at what we did last year, and we're leading up to it this year, obviously, COVID played a lot into what we were able to do as far as outreach.
We've implemented, you know, requests of trying to get in our agenda packets, like the 2%, trying to discuss it sooner rather than later, you know, things like that for agenda planning.
January, June, I think, to make sure we discuss that.
Yeah, and we didn't have that before, if I recall.
This is really speaking to more the regular calendar items and how we go about going through the budgetary process and things that we want to make sure on this, in that
Well, we always have the opportunity to ask, to have something put on the agenda if we want to.
Right. Yep.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, so I was trying to differentiate. We have that, which are specific items. This is more of a broad look at how we do business, essentially, how we strive to do business. And I'm thinking we should lift up again as we begin that development of the agenda for next year, the budgetary process, right? That we be deliberate about how we reach out to our ownership to get feedback, right? Because that's how we know what they want. So, I would say we're in compliance, but that's something I think we can improve on.
I do too.
Any other comments on that? Anybody want to lift up any of those questions? Because I think we kind of covered them all already. Very good. All right. That brings us to item 12 on our agenda, Extended Public Comment. Extended Public Comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue, and we'll open up Extended Public Comment at 8:43 PM. Not putting this down. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close Extended Public Comment at 8:43 PM. That brings us to item 13 on our agenda, Manager's Comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you have the floor.
Just to quickly, it's, in reviewing the Rogue Commission's Agenda Packet for their meeting tomorrow, looks like they're going to be considering approval of a grant from MEDC to install the traffic light at Pickard and Bamber, which has been kind of talked about in the past, so it sounds like that's moving, I'm sorry, Bradley and Pickard.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that's good. $200,000 now.
And the other item, and I wanted to speak to trustee Bill's comment a minute ago on CMU and the master plan, what I am happy to be able to report is that the township was invited to a review of CMU. that the township was invited to a review of CMU's master plan, which is a little different than in the past, and it shows an outreach on behalf of CMU, which is a little new. And so that's very positive. I've had a sense over the last year or so that CMU is, is legitimately and genuinely interested in, in strengthening relationships throughout the community. And I, I know I'm being present more often. So I think in the long run, those are good things.
Oh, yeah.
And being invited and Mr. Nanny attended as well. We're able to comment, review, and, and it's not just window dressing. So I think that's as important as any of the details within the plan for the township.
I, I think that's really cool.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us item fourteen, Final Board Member Comment. Trustee Huck?
I have a couple. I just want to let the public know. I mean, we have nice parks here in our township. McDonald Park, Jameson Park, you know, the new playground over at Jameson Park, they're open. People use them. And at last Wednesday night's Council of Governments meeting, when they were talking about parks, I mentioned that we have talked about putting a park on the south side of town for a connector for the rails to trails. And that went over very well. People really like that. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but one thing I think that we need to start looking at in the future, especially with this project that's just going on down on Broomfield Road, there's, you know, the new parking lot that's going down there, that started yesterday or Monday. Is that a thousand lot, or a thousand spot lot, or two thousand spots that's going to replace, you know?
That large grass area.
Yeah, that large grass area is all, yeah. And that's going to be student parking and staff parking. Well, that's going to increase the amount of people going across Broomfield Road. So I think what we need to do here in the future to start getting some traffic off of Broomfield Road, along with maybe the Road Commission, is looking at paving Deerfield Road from Whiteville Road to Crawford Road. And then eventually, we're going to do improvements on Lincoln Road. I'm hoping that we do improvements on Lincoln Road from Broomfield to Deerfield. It'll cut some of that traffic off. I mean, there's going to be a lot of people crossing that road now. There's not going to be a bridge over it. So I think that's something that we need to look at between both entities. And then, I don't know if anybody noticed, but I got asked by the County Road Commission Board to run for their board. So I just wanted everybody to know that I applied for that position, and I'll be on the ballot in November. If I'm elected to that board, then I'll have to resign from this board. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
That Deerfield Road, you were done?
Yeah.
Deerfield Road, that's always been a problem area for us anyways, as far as gravel roads go.
Right. It's limestone, but it's just, it's in bad shape.
Yeah. Always been in bad shape, it seems like, yeah.
That'd be really expensive though, wouldn't it?
Interesting idea.
It really needs to be done though. It's bad.
How much is a life worth, you know? But I just think that if they take traffic, CMU has a football team, take traffic from, how many people come down Whiteville Road from, you know, the western part of the state, they cut through the back way and come down Whiteville, and then they go around the curve by Riverwood, get on Broomfield, well now, turn on Deerfield Road, go right to the backside of the stadium. So I think it's something that we should look at.
Yeah, it's interesting idea. Thanks.
Well, I mean, especially with that parking lot there.
Yeah.
I mean, we think, you know.
They're going to have to put a sidewalk then, aren't they, with that parking lot?
Yeah, but it's not going to, you still got to cross four lanes. You still have to cross four lanes of Broomfield Road.
Well, that's through the light, though.
How many kids do you think are going to walk down to a light? They're going to cut across everywhere. You're going to have people crossing all over from there, from West Campus Drive to railroad tracks. I mean, they're not going to.
Are they going to have to put a sidewalk there with that parking lot?
I'm sure they will. I don't know, but as it relates to Broomfield Road and not so much Deerfield, that might be, if you're successful in your endeavors, you could help get the Road Commission. There, there was a meeting today at CMU about Broomfield Road and that parking lot and recognition at least, that even now without the parking lot, that forty mile an hour is pretty fast.
Yeah.
And there are several crosswalks that have the signage and all, not all with a light, but it's still dark and, and it's just going to get more problematic with that parking lot. So looking forward, at least as it relates to Broomfield, you know, that there is beginning to be discussion about making improvements to Broomfield because in many sections, it's all beat up. And, you know, that might be a time to try to deal with what is, to your comment, going to be increased pedestrian traffic going back and forth across Broomfield.
And speed bumps are a good thing. And a lot of universities use a lot of speed bumps to slow traffic.
Problem is, the university doesn't really control that road.
Can't they get a special use or something, or?
I don't know what the rules are.
I don't either.
There's history, and, and they, they increased the speed some years ago to allow for more traffic to get through.
It is too fast. I know it's way too fast.
It's not owned by the city. It's not owned by CMU. It's owned by the county.
Right.
Well, that's different because it's essentially in the city. So the county has taken over that part of Broomfield because of history. I'll leave it at that. And so there isn't a lot of ability for CMU to have a lot of control over making that safer without other partners deciding to jump in. Do you think I'm misstating that? What you know?
I don't know what the history is, but I do know that CMU would be interested in anything that could improve pedestrian safety through there.
I just don't think they have control there, right?
I doubt it. I, I don't know. Do you know, Rodney?
I believe the answer is that it's correct, that the Road Commission controls that city's route. So they make those decisions.
Well, who knows if there's even any dialogue between the both commissions, you know? Do you know if there's any dialogue?
No.
Does that come up at the meetings? No. Okay.
No, you don't know, or no, there is not?
No, I don't know of any. Alls I know is people cross there like crazy. I mean, I, I had an experience years ago. Who knows, Dan Marley. Everybody remember Dan Marley? They went to see him in Olympic basketball, player, NBA player. I knew that kid could jump. When, one day I was driving down Broomfield Road, he wasn't watching what he was doing. He was running. Man, that guy jumped over my car. He jumped over my car. I mean, I, I, he fell. Then he fell on Broomfield Road. Whoa. You know, then I was happy to see that he was the leading scorer on the enter, on our Olympic team in nineteen eighty-four.
Thank goodness you didn't hit him.
And he almost took him out.
That kid could jump, man. He jumped right over my car.
Pretty darn good NBA player.
Yeah, he was. He should probably owe me some money right now for putting up his name.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comments, Bill. Clerk Cody?
I didn't have any comments, but I'm going to agree with Trustee Huck on Deerfield Road being paved and Lincoln Road being paved. If that will stretch or work on.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, just two things. I only had one until Bill gave his news. And Bill, congratulations, and I hope you the best. I hope you the best. We would miss you on this board if, if you do get it. I'm going to tell you that right straight out. I, I enjoy working with you. The other one is a bit of news that I received, I believe, this week from our manager. It was kind of a kick in the stomach about our pump truck. Moving from July, I believe, to October, I had to pull over. I cried a little bit. I have to admit it. But the, the question was brought up by Trustee Thering, I believe, in our last meeting about the days that we had. And I made a joke of a hundred and thirty days. Ha ha. That was pretty darn close. So, but that was the other thing. I'm, I'm glad to see this coming. Thank you for the update on that, though. I appreciate it. All jokes aside, I can't wait for October now, but.
You could really use a break now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, when I got the email. Now is spring.
Yeah, yeah. But just, just to, just to show it off, in a sense, too, for the community. That's it. That's all I've had.
Trustee Bill?
Speaking of seats that are going up, going vacant, I don't know, Mr. Jim Horton is not going to run either. So I don't know if everybody.
Yeah, I heard that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's like, you want, you thinking about the county? I'm like, no. No, sir.
Well, the redistricting happened, and he would have had to run against another.
And then he just started a new practice here in town. So, but that, I, I mean, I'm all for paving, but I mean, we got to be fiscally responsible, too. Maybe put that in a long-term budget thing for Deerfield, you know, but I don't, I don't, that's a lot of money, and there's a shortage of bag for that kind of thing.
Treasurer Rice?
Um, there was one thing I forgot that was discussed at our sidewalks and pathways meeting. And it was something I hadn't heard before that they wanted me to bring up, and that was Ballard posts to help with safety of pedestrians and that, and looking into, you know, if we needed any Ballard posts to, to help with that.
I don't even know what that is.
I don't either.
Stick them in the middle of the.
What are they?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, go, go ahead. You were.
Just a, just pipes that, normally they're covered with plastic now.
Oh, I know. Oh, so that people don't. So that someone driving doesn't.
If you go down Mission, like we're, by the fairgrounds, the sidewalk that goes to nowhere out there, there's Ballard posts there, so people can't drive down the sidewalk.
Yeah. Rail, rail to trail.
Yeah, yeah. All over there, on the rails to trails.
Yeah, I didn't get to finish my comments. I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Bill.
Finish after you're done.
Oh, that, that was it. I, I forgot about that. It was something I just hadn't heard brought up before, so I thought I'd mention.
I hope you don't win on the Road Commission, Bill. I was going to say the same thing.
We need you.
Last, last night meetings. Let's put it that way.
I need, I need somebody on this board that knows everybody, and I believe that's you, sir. You know, we got to have the inside scoop on everybody. I don't want to say any. Yeah. So, and also thank you to Mr. Nanny for a great report, and that's about all I've got.
And Trustee Bills, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
It's okay. I, I did pause. It was kind of a long.
Yeah, I, I like your idea about, idea about Deerfield Road, but I also agree with your comments that kind of have wait and see what's going to happen there. There may be other solutions coming into play, but that certainly, if we have to look at solutions for safety, because I think you're right, lives matter, and if that's a potential solution, then appreciate the idea.
Well, if we could get trucks off, it's the main thing.
Right.
A lot of trucks hadn't sold.
His comment was, look to the future on paving that, because I wrote it downward.
Oh, well, I kind of figured that's how you meant it, too. And yeah, I was providing my support for your idea. I thought it was a good idea. I only have one question, and I'm going to make myself look a little silly, because we do this the same time every year, but I know the audit is undergoing at this point. Do we, roughly when we expect report from the auditor?
I believe it's at the May eleventh meeting, your, your next meeting.
Oh, okay. Because I know I've had to answer questions to the auditor and it's been on my radar and figured it was soon.
Yeah, May, at, at the first May, meeting in May, you'll have the presentation by Yo and Yo.
Okay. And if we fail the audit, for some reason, it's probably the supervisor's fault.
Yeah. And I, I wanted to say thanks for you, for Tara, for picking up new stuff, too. Thank you very much.
Actually, used to do it in my other job, so it came easy.
Wow. That's just amazing.
We got a gem.
So qualified, so overqualified.
I remember that in January.
That's right.
She's over here tallying up. All right.
Change, change, change.
All right. Happy to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills, all voters say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.